Audio's up now. Audio's up. That's probably me.
Good evening. It's Monday, July 10th, 2023. And this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. The first item on the agenda is a discussion item, MBTA Communities Update on Actions. Colleen, is that you?
I'm still working on them as like five minutes ago. So I have what I'm thinking of as a flyer.
While Colleen's looking for the information, she's been working on a few things. So she got a draft bylaw example that she's been working on, kind of just populating last week and the week prior. She's also been working on the website to create a special page, informational page linked through the Planning Board webpage. That's a little difficult still right now because the new website is very onerous and we haven't fully learned all the ways to edit it yet. So we'll work on that. And then-
Thank you. I'll pass it to Colleen.
And then the intent is also to put together a flyer. So Colleen's getting some examples from CHAPA. And we'll pass it by you so you can critique or add information or provide some comments so that she can complete that. And then we'll send that out to a printing. She's been in contact with Jim Hegarty about how to do that, which is the best way to send it out. So Colleen, I'll let you take over.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at the screen, this is kind of what I had in mind. Nothing is written in stone yet, but so this would be the first page. And since we have a standing agenda item, I thought I'd throw that in there and try and get people to come to the meetings. And then the second page-
What is this a page of?
It's going to be, oh, I'm sorry. It's going to be a postcard mailing, and I'll show you the pricing on that. So this is the, be the other side. And we can still put some more information on that side as well. I just didn't have time to kind of look for more. So going back to this, surely like to get some feedback from the board on whether this is a way to go or if you have another idea of how to kind of get the conversation going.
Other than the postcard, you mean, or about the postcard?
Just about the postcard. That's kind of like the first one to, to get off. I found some funky graphics that kind of looked like multifamily, different size housing.
So do we have an action plan? Have you had a chance to?
What do you mean?
So the, at the last meeting, didn't you-
I did.
Oh, okay. So Marnie had volunteered to sit down with you and work on an action plan? Like where we're going and how to get there instead of just having all these balls up in the air at once?
Yeah, I'm good at juggling.
So we, so we know what the goal is and the steps we need to take to get there. Because I think other than just having people come to Planning Board meetings, I think we were going to have, try to have some standalone-
Yes.
-explaining what MBTA Communities is.
Exactly. This, this is really just to get the conversation started.
Okay.
Get something out there for people to start looking at. And then the big meeting, we said we would have it over at the police station. Is it the, the safety building?
Public safety.
Public site, safety building.
So I think we need a, a map on how we're go, where we're going and how to get there first.
Okay.
So if you could reach you and Marnie talk because she's very organized.
So I can, why don't we try for like Wednesday? And I'll, I'll set something up with you and just we'll block time and just sit down and put a plan together.
Absolutely.
Because I would agree, because I think if we're putting dates out there, we actually need content for what we're going to do on those dates. So it's, it's, you know, much more of a bigger plan.
Absolutely.
Do you want to come in or do you want to do a Zoom meeting? What's, what's best for you?
It's easy for me to come in. So I, I just have to move a couple of things on my calendar, but I will plan for time. I'll-
We can make an opening for when you have time. So if it's afternoon or morning, you just pick and we'll make the time ready for you.
Perfect.
Okay.
We'll do that offline.
Okay.
Okay. The postcard's cute, but I, but we'll see where that goes in the, in the action plan.
So, and then, so Jim Hegarty came to me with the company that does the mailing. And I do have pricing, so I can, it doesn't have the postage because the postage has changed today. So, but it's, it's right in the area we wanted it to be. And we can do more than one, obviously. Let me see if I can find it.
Less relevant for right now. I think once we have a plan, maybe we then just talk about next steps. I don't want to, I don't want to necessarily put the cart before the horse.
Okay. Then that's pretty much all-
Thank you for all your efforts though, Colleen. I know it's a lot.
It's just getting started is the hardest thing.
Right.
Anyone else have anything on this?
We've also been having a lot of walk-ins lately. So Colleen's been facing some of those at the same time. So interruptions are difficult. You take your focus off and then you have to go back. So.
Perfect. But that's good. Thank you. So next item, implementation of Planning Board policy for public shade trees on scenic roads. So at the last meeting, we had a policy that Ms. Murray had put together. So we were going to review that and discuss that tonight.
Okay. And Colleen, are you able to put that up? Pull it up? That'd be great. Okay. So actually, it's, it's actually a scenic road policy. It applies to both stone walls and trees. Of course, there's some overlap, right? But it's not exactly how it's mentioned on the discussion because it also includes stone walls. So I just prefer to call it a scenic road policy. So what I, the thought was when I put it together, and I'm interested in your feedback, is that, you know, seeing that we've had now some opportunity to kind of understand what our process is and fine tune, working with the public and working with the tree warden and working with applications. You know, I sort of took the approach, well, if we, you know, how can we kind of integrate some of that information and also educate the public on scenic roads? So it's clear that Southborough, you know, didn't adopt our warrant article for, you know, for scenic roads. But I think that it's still very valuable to educate the public as to what a scenic road is by making a policy so that if they ever have a question that they notice, oh, I think Planning Board has a scenic road policy. So I, I basically took a lot of information-
Sorry, Deb. Point of order?
Yeah.
Ms. Latrell? Um, just a point. So I think the Select Board agreed to a public shade tree policy. So I don't think we have, it's in within our means today to talk about another policy that includes a scenic road.
The Planning Board did?
Yes, when we met with the Select Board. I may be wrong, but I thought that's with the minutes, the Select Board agreed to a public shade tree policy.
There is one already, right? The Select Board one.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So now I'm just confused. Can you remind me, so this is a new policy that we're proposing that protects the scenic roads?
Yes. So this is a Planning Board policy. Yeah. So when I was, no, no, it's okay. When I was, just to take a step back, when I was looking at the tree policy and I had never reviewed it before, although the committee members had it and actually Lisa and Mimi had been working on it for a very long time, I looked at it with a fresh pair of eyes and I was, you know, I came to the table and had a whole bunch of comments. And then after discussion, you know, realized that, okay, it's basically sitting with the Select Board the very next night and they were going to vote on it. So I said, well, let me go through those comments and think, well, why did I want to make those comments? So I, you know, think that we can be doing better on scenic roads. So it's really less about public shade trees because now that we have a policy on that, I'm trying not to have any overlap on that. My intent is not to change that policy at all. So if there is any overlap, tell me because it's really, there could, I think I know where there might be a little bit. But the, the idea of it is that many towns have Planning Board public scenic road policies. And they also have Planning Board rules and regulations on scenic roads. And they also have Planning Board handbooks and other things like that on scenic roads. So just by the fact that they have something, it's on their website, a lot of times they have a section on their website dedicated to scenic roads. I think that's part of the education.
So Debbie, do you want to walk through this policy? Because it was our assignment to review it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So the, so the first, so I'll just walk through it really quickly. So-
Well, and then we'll take comments on each section.
Okay. That sounds good. So the first part is really just the, the statute. We all know it very well. You know, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15C, but this is really here for the public. These are public-facing documents. So, you know, what is it? What is the Scenic Road Act? So it's just defined. And do you want to, comments as we go by section?
Yeah. So any comments on that? Should it be there? Is it helpful? Is it confusing? My only thought that was, that this statute is kind of difficult to interpret and we've had different interpretations of it. And I don't know if putting it out there would cause more confusion, but otherwise I think it's fine.
Would you prefer like an interpreted, like a Planning Board interpretation of, or Southborough's interpretation of this provision? Or skip it and just make reference to it?
So my preference would be to skip it and start with purpose, but, but whatever, I'm one person, whatever the board thinks.
Well, I, so the spirit of this initiative of having a Planning Board scenic road policy is really informational to the public, is it not?
Yeah.
Of existing state law. So-
Yeah, there's, there's some interpretation, I'd say, but yeah, yeah. For example-
So that's not, that's a little bit different than what I thought we were doing.
Well, so a policy is really supposed to be high level. I, I, if anything, this is a bit in the weeds. But a policy could be, it's our policy not to cut down public shade trees unless they are dead, dying, public hazard, or, you know, something like that. That could be our policy. So that's not in Mass. General Law. You can, you can sort of find it in there, but that's our, you know, that could be our policy. Or, you see?
So maybe you can direct me to where in Sec., Chapter 40, Section 15C, it says that? That municipalities have that authority? Because if we're not, if we're not just implementing state law, then what are we doing?
Well-
Just making up another section of the code? Because that's a whole different thing.
No. So policy, so policy isn't code and it's not rules and regs either. Remember that Select Board supported a warrant article that town voted on, on policy, uh, rules and regs for boards? So this isn't rules and regs. This is a policy. So, I mean, this is really meant to say, here's a, here's how really Southborough feels about scenic roads. In the next section, for example, we say, and here's our scenic roads. And here's what you can do if you want to have a scenic road too. So it doesn't put the burden on the Planning Board any longer to try to make all roads scenic, but says, here's how the state defines it. And if, here's what you would do if you want your road to be scenic, for example. And here's what it means to have a scenic road. There's a, stone walls and, and trees are, are part of that, you know, Mass. General Law. So there's many towns that have something like-
So my understanding of a policy, it would be the Planning Board's policy and how the Planning Board implements Mass. General Law. Doesn't go any further.
Right.
Right.
But it's how the Planning Board would implement.
That's really all we have the authority to do.
Correct.
And quite frankly, the, the spirit of town meeting, my, my feeling, if you will, or my interpretation of the sentiment in the public is they don't want more overreach. They want less.
So we're doing this anyway.
So if we, we got to be careful about how far we push our jurisdiction. And because what could happen very easily is blowback from the public and resistance and loss of protection potentially.
So what I tried to do is capture what we've been doing already. I can only think of one section where I wanted feedback on whether or not we can implement a fee for, for an application. Yeah, I don't know that we can or can't, so I wanted feedback on that. But, but this is what we do and this is, I think it's something for the public to, so that they know. For example, we had somebody come for a stone wall application. Where does it say to the public what to do and what to provide? They know that there's an application, but we had a young homeowner come and make his pitch as to, you know, his photos, his plan, what he wanted to do, and he had the opportunity to speak to us. We don't have a policy that, that says what that procedure is. And I'm suggesting we have that-
Is that true?
Well, there's a-
There's a form.
We have a tree, a scenic road. We have a scenic road, stone wall, and tree removal form. And on that form, like many of our other forms, granted, it's not super lengthy or descriptive, but there is two or three lines of instructions of what they're supposed to submit.
Thank you.
And it references the MGL as well.
So what's wrong with this?
There's nothing wrong with that for stone wall. I, I would like to change that for public shade trees. So for public shade tree, and I brought-
Okay. So let's go section by section because we're getting a little all over the place here.
That's my comment on having this in here. I mean, I understand maybe where you're coming from, that skipping it may be beneficial to some. However, I'm more concerned with our exact role and in the context of Mass. General Law. So to me, it makes a lot of sense to actually put the, the, you know, reference law in the policy. Thanks.
I would agree with Jessie, I think, including it. But it's also the question, and I guess in my mind, is this policy or an educational content? Because there is nothing that really says, here's a scenic road. Hey, you live on a scenic road. Here's what you should know about that versus a policy.
Well, there's a couple of points in here that I think that are policy. And I think that some of this is reference, like laws reference, which roads are scenic is reference. That we are not going to get into definitions because the town didn't vote for that, right? So I see your point. I tried to make this somewhat educational because I've had probably a hundred people ask me, you know, over the last couple of years, what's a scenic road? How do you measure a right of way? What's a public shade tree? You know, why do I have to go for a hearing on a stone wall?
And when I get those questions, I say, call Karina Quinn. Not to be facetious, because I, I think that you're, you're, the spirit of what you're doing is admirable. But we do have a great town planner and I, I literally do direct a lot of that kind of info stuff right to Karina.
That's very good. I tried to answer the question. So I'm not sending it your way, Karina, but maybe I should. But the other thing is, where's the form? So I'll, I have, you know, neighbors whose trees died, you know, with the gypsy moth caterpillars. And many, many came and said, how come there's no form? How come the tree warden's name isn't on the website? So this isn't policy really, and it's not even Mass. General Law. It's just helping the public to find what to do. We don't have the tree warden's name and number on, on our DPW website. We don't have, we don't say, hey, if you have questions about shade trees or stone walls, call Karina. Hey, here's the form. So, I mean, I think it's helping the public and that way I think it's educational. So anyway, on the second-
Sorry, my last comment would just be to that, I actually, to Jessie's earlier point about overreaching, I personally would applaud an effort for an educational deck versus, or were document versus a policy. So, but I, I like the spirit of it, but I think when I hear policy, it makes me very nervous.
I will say also in town, we use policy, rules and regs and guidelines interchangeably, and it's absolutely wrong. And I've made some public comments on that. And I'm actually, this is probably, falls into that bucket where it's probably, probably not policy.
Versus guidelines.
Yeah, yeah. So that's another thing is, okay, there's some words on a paper. Does it make sense to, to have it?
And that was going to be my point, that we have other guidelines. We have public shade tree guidelines. We have design, downtown district design guidelines. It's more of a go-to if someone has questions as opposed to-
Okay. So that's a good point. So maybe this is-
So maybe a guideline.
Yep.
Ms. Broschel?
Thank you. So I am all for process and, and I think that's the best way to educate the public is for them to know. And I shared the same concern, Deb. I give you so much credit for taking the time to do this. And it's very well done. I just worry about it being a policy versus a tool that if somebody lives on a scenic road or they want to know how to make their road scenic, it makes almost more sense to me. This is a guideline for them to be able to do that. And when I think policy, I think it's the procedures that this board is going to use or to mandate, if you will, on how we feel about things. I view this as more of an educational piece, very similar to Marnie versus a policy. And I did have more, more comments as we go through, you know, about what, what specifically are we trying to accomplish with this? Is it setting something that is, is set in stone? Is it, is it at some point, obviously, this piece where we're at in Section 1 isn't going to overlap with anything else or the policy that the Select Board had put in place? So I guess I'll, I'll just leave it at that, that I think, I think of it more of a guideline than a policy. And I agree, there's a lot of policies that people say are guidelines, and it is definitely confusing. But I think if we set the path going forward, if I'm a citizen going to the website and I see guideline, I think it's going to tell me what I need to know versus policy.
That's very good. I appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah. So the next section is the, Section 3 is the-
Two.
Two? Okay. The policy, the purpose, right. Purpose is roads, how, how to recommend your road, you know, as a scenic road, if a person would like to do that. And also, let me just read this, trees and stone walls within the right of way and scenic roads will be protected and not altered except after a public hearing following notification of interested parties and after consideration of proposed work by the Planning Board based on, you know, the criteria below. So maybe that can be better worded, but the idea of it is that this document, let's just say if it's guideline or whatever, is, has to do with public shade trees and that there is a, there is a process. And what is that process? And how, how do we determine whether somebody can remove their tree, public shade tree, or their stone wall? So that's-
Okay. So any comments on that? Mr. Stein?
I recommend, number one, roads will be recommended for designation as scenic roads under stated criteria be stricken. And my reasoning for that is it's really at the discretion of the Planning Board, the ConCom Historical Commission, to make those kinds of recommendations. So that is a, a board vote to recommend for designation. And this policy cannot ensure, and the policy has no authority at all to ensure anything be recommended for designation, in my view. And again, the spirit of town meeting was clear that they don't want more roads recommended at this point. So that's my reasoning on removing that, but number two is perfect.
Okay, thanks. But what if a, a member of the public wants to make their road a scenic road?
Well, the, I think the, I think the policy addresses that without it, without there be an assurance that anything that could be a scenic road will be recommended for a scenic road. That, that does not make sense, but it, but having your pol, the, the policy, you know, in the public domain, to me, would address that concern by a resident.
Ms. Houlihan?
Again, I think I would default to the guidelines. And if it, if you kept one, it would be the nuance of how to solicit a committee or an elected board to consider a road for, for a scenic road. So it'd be guidance on how to do that versus that roads will be recommended. Because if, if you're a personal citizen, this comes down in Section 4, you're going to have to buy the newspaper ads. So like there's some of that stuff that's not in here that we think we, we'd have to kind of put in there to be, what is the process? So again, like I think before, instead of policy, it'd be more guideline. And this is an instructional informational resource on how to understand what a scenic road is in our town.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Broschel?
I don't think I have anything further than what was said.
I have, so on, on number two, I think that stating that trees and stone walls with, within the right of way on scenic roads will be protected and will not be altered except after a public hearing is in conflict with statute. The statute says stone walls shall not be removed or damaged. But you can alter, you can fix a stone wall or you can put stones on a stone wall, which would alter it. That doesn't require a public hearing.
Okay. So I borrowed a lot of this language from other towns, so I guess they're wrong. But so if that section-
Well, I don't know if they have a bylaw that says that, that they, that they've taken a step further on stone walls and says no one can touch one without a hearing. But we don't, so we, this is, goes beyond the statute.
So if the word altered was changed to a different word, does that sentence still make sense or do you still not like it?
Well, it, so it says up in, tearing down or destruction of stone walls requires a hearing.
Okay.
And also- And also, no, trees shall be altered except after a public hearing. I think there are situations where there are emergencies, where things can, trees can be altered without a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. It becomes like, very, very long to get into all that detail. So to say, oh, and if it's a hazard tree, you should consult the tree policy. Or maybe it's just better to say, anything outside of this or something, then follows the select board's policy on public shade trees. Because that's where the detail is, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, so if this is just to inform the public on scenic roads and how to get a scenic road designated, then the other stuff, we don't need.
I wouldn't say that's, to me, that's not all it is. That's part of it. I think there's a few things in here that are not anywhere in other sections.
Ms. Lutrell? Would it make sense if we have Debbie just talk about those places, the gaps that she's found in her work? Because I still think it comes down to the conversation among the board members, is this a guideline or a policy? Because if it's a guideline, I would say we could go through this offline and really just change the nuance of the language, to bring it up in higher level, and just as an educational resource. If it's a policy, then I think there's a way to stream, there's streamlining and things that we would need to better correct to reference mass general law, as well as other policies that may be existing. So I think there's kind of either upper level guideline or a deeper level policy.
Okay.
Is that okay if we have Deb just cover the gaps?
Then I'm going to skip to, I think, section six. I altered my version a little bit, but basically, under, after applicability under filing. So section six is really kind of the what to expect, so maybe this does fall better under a guideline. But I really, you know, there's four sections to this. It's filing, notice, hearing, and decision. And, you know, almost everybody who comes before us asks, like, you know, when will I find out? Person on our walk the other day said, will you notify me? You know, so this is, I think, educational as well, is these sections. One of the gaps I see is that a member of the public does not have the opportunity to put in their own words why they want their public shade tree removed. And so. What's that?
I think it's on the form.
So, so they, the. Okay. So let me just grab a packet for a second. So I have a packet, for example, for just one of our tree hearings. I have, you know, I've kept them all. And they come in through the DPW, and they read pretty much, I'm just randomly picking, tree dead, decaying, top half missing, large tree, completely dead, no foliage, cavities, over service wires, dropping pieces. A lot of them say.
So Debbie, are you suggesting that instead of going through the DPW and having the list compiled there, that everyone should go through the planning office?
No, I think it could still go to the tree warden. Because it's, if it's a tree, if it's a tree, I think it should go to the tree warden. But I think that something gets lost, in my opinion, by, you know, for example, we had a guy with a stone wall, right, who uploaded a photo, filled out the application, put in his own words what he was going to do, his remediation, he actually gave us a little plan of where he was going to move the stones. He was very thoughtful. And I think that if somebody is going to remove, that's the ideal. I think that was really, really great for his tree, for his stone wall. If somebody wants to remove a tree, I'd like to see something more than, tree's dead, dropping limbs. You know, if I, I have a public shade tree right now that is dead. And if I were going to, you know, I've just been lazy. I haven't, I haven't, you know, called the tree warden, for example. But if I were to put in a, you know, my own application, I would take a picture of it, and it would be a current photo, so you can see, you know, in the summer, for example, it's dead. I would give some, a little more thought to it than what we're getting, I think, because I think something's getting lost in the translation. I would say, you know, my tree's been dead for two years, it's not dropping anything, but I think that it's, you know, it's hollow, because I'm seeing the woodpeckers, it doesn't seem to be imminent hazard, but, you know, can we put this on the next, you know, tree hearing? Or something like that. I think that if you're, I think that if a person is requesting a tree to be removed, they ought to put in their own words why. And I think that some of the information that we're getting, that's being transcribed for them, is just some of the contents not there. So I think a person could upload the form and send it to the tree warden with a photo. A lot of the photos we get too, as you know, they are not current. We look at them and we say, gee, when I walk out there, there's a lot of leaves. So I'd like to see a photo, and is there a spot? Are there termites? Is there fungus? Are there no leaves? And it's July?
So expecting a resident to say if there are termites, or if there's fungus.
We've seen that. There was a gentleman that showed up.
Well, there was one. But most people say the tree's dead.
Yeah.
The designee goes out and determines whether, A, it's a public shade tree, and B, whether there's any issue with it. Sometimes he's gone out and said, there's, there's not an issue.
Right.
And then the resident can come forward on their own.
Right. Well, I mean, my opinion, so I'm just one vote, but in a lot of towns, they've got a tree form on their link to their planning board website. I don't know where it goes in their town. If it goes to the tree warden, that's fine. But it's up to the, you know, person who wants it removed to do the, in fact, I think it would be less work on the town. The tree warden designee still has to go out and look at it, for example. But it puts it on the owner who is, you know, not the owner, but the resident, whose property is there, or even the person across the street. I live on Flag Road, and we've got people who will call to have a tree removed, and it's not near their property. They just say, I'm driving by this tree, and it looks like a limb might be falling. Right? And we also have people who call about the same tree.
So Debbie, just on this point, because something's triggering. So we get applications directly when the person who's applying is going to pay for the removal themselves.
Right.
They want the tree down, and they say, we're going to take it down? No problem, we just know we need a public hearing.
Okay.
So when that happens, because it's a scenic road, the tree warden designee gets involved because we say, well, you need to also go talk to him to make sure, you know, it's a public shade tree, et cetera, the flow chart that was there before. But it's not necessarily on that list. The trees that get on the DPW list, is my understanding, that gives, those are removed by the town, by town cost. So we do get applications directly from residents who come in and say, you know, I want to take care of this. And we get them processed very quickly. The other ones, we decided to formulate, like, compile a list.
So the person who wants a tree removed and is willing to pay for it, they, they still fill out the form, and we still have a hearing?
When the DPW has a list like that?
Yeah.
The DPW fills out the form.
Right.
And it, it's an application, it's just that they have a list of trees and locations. If an individual resident does, they still fill out the form.
Okay.
And submit it. And but the tree warden designee and tree warden, select would are involved in the public hearing, per se, because a consolidated public hearing is required for a scenic road tree removal.
No, I understand. I think it, I think it would be more meaningful if people put into their own words why they want the tree removed.
Can I just add too?
Sure.
On the application that you referenced, that the DPW filled out, or the tree warden filled out, those people physically call. They're just saying, hey, there's a tree. So your suggestion is, just so I'm clear, is to tell them, go to this page on the website and fill out this form. And.
And put in your own words and upload a photo. I think that takes work away from Chris, to be honest. But many, many of the photos, hundreds of photos that we have gotten are not taken in the right season. And the person who's looking at it every day will say, oh, God, that tree, I'm going to take a picture, and I'm going to upload that form. I don't think that's a lot of extra work on somebody, and I think it would be less work on the DPW. I'm not suggesting they don't, they don't still go to the DPW, because they're public shade trees, and they're going to be removed by the town if they're voted. But many, many towns have a process where if a person is requesting it, they can't just get it on a list. And remember, anybody can put a tree on a list. And there's been trees on my road where somebody is putting the same tree on a list, and the same number keeps coming up. There's, there's trees that, if it doesn't make the list, it might make the next one. And we have nothing in our policy to say, if we vote no, that they can't put it on the list the next month. So really, I think it's the homeowner who's, you know, in front of the, you know, right of way, should be the one to put in their words, why do they want to remove that tree?
So Deb, I think that's one, so your gap is basically that the form is insufficient, is a gap that you're looking to fill with this policy? Is that accurate?
I think it can be modified, because I think you change the title of them, right? Karina, sometimes they say scenic road, and sometimes they say stone wall or tree.
No, the form always says.
Oh, it's always the same?
Scenic road, stone, so even if it's just a tree, the application still says stone wall, and it's the scenic road part that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think we can use this form. I think that there could be a few more lines. But I would prefer that the applicant, the application be signed by the person who would like the tree removed. Because when it comes from the tree warden, for example, we'll get 60, or we'll get 100, and we get very little about that tree, and we're not getting written notes by the arborist. So if we're not, if, you know, if we're not going to have any of that, I at least want to hear from the homeowner, written notes from the arborist or the.
So we have gotten written notes from the arborist. You, I think you wanted more, but there were written notes from the arborist.
Okay, they're handwritten, right? His handwritten notes? So for example, on the national grid trees, Cliff was seeing them for the first time?
Right, but you got typed notes from the national grid arborist.
Yeah, I mean, that's different, because that's not a homeowner, but they were very sparse. But, yeah. I mean, yeah, that's my preference. I think that's, that's meaningful, and I think that we wouldn't get so many repeat trees if, if we found out exactly why the person wants it removed.
So I think we're trying to make amends through COVID, and there's been a lot of backlog. Like, I think that's number one. Number two, like, I, I think we could sit here for another two hours and debate this. And so I personally would like to maybe get to the points where, where are the specific gaps? Like, I understand you believe this is to be insufficient. I think with any change in transition where you're asking the public to do something different, you have to offer something for at least five years, and in parallel path. They can still call and do it the way they do it, but we can also include it. I don't think you can wholesale make a decision that you have to shift to this way for us to hear it. So I think we have to also recognize that we have a public that not everyone has access to the internet, that is not able to work the internet, and is not proficient in those type of things. And so I think, you know, if we can kind of ground this onto the reality of where the gaps are that you've identified, that we can then have a greater conversation of policy or guideline, you know, not to, not to be brief, but I think we should not characterize this meeting into an hour on this tree policy.
Okay. Another thing I thought we might put in writing is that the town does engage an arborist? I don't know if that's in the.
It's in the policy.
It's in the policy?
It is.
Okay. And then another thing that is not anywhere is the clarification that we got from town council, that the vote of the planning board is separate from the vote of the tree warden. And I think that's important to put somewhere. So there was a vote, I think it was Sto, the Stow Road tree, where we did not, there was a vote where the town, the planning board did not give their consent. So the way the law is written is that the planning board must have consent, prior written consent of the planning board. So we had a, a two to one vote on the planning board, so it was a no to remove on the planning board, and a yes to remove by the tree warden. And this policy or document uses language that I found in other documents, Sherborne, Natick, Wellesley, and a couple other towns all use the same sort of language. They say, the consent of the planning board to a proposed action, action shall not be regarded as implying consent by the tree warden, or vice versa, consent of both the planning board and the tree warden is required for removal of a public shade tree on a scenic road. And I think that's important, no matter what, where we put it, put it on the website, frankly. But I think when people are, want to know about, well, what is our process? That's actually the process. And that's not written anywhere. And Jessie, I'm sorry, but this is, I think, pretty much interpretation. I believe this is clear from mass general law, but there's still confusion over this today. So I think it needs to be written down somewhere, that both tree warden and planning board need to give consent. And if there's no consent, the trees don't get removed. It's that simple. So that, to me, is one of the most important things about this document, and why I went looking for documents, because I thought we made, I thought it was confusing over, let's just say, over the Stow Road. Something I didn't put in here that I think also probably is this idea about kind of repeat submissions. That's why I was thinking we could put a fee, but this isn't rules and regs, and maybe we can't put a fee. But I think that a decision, some towns say the decision is final for a year, or something like that. And if you have a hazard tree, that follows another policy. That's tree policy. If you have a hazard tree, you call the tree warden, and it follows that process. So in other words, don't come back, you know? And we have seen some of the trees come back on Flag Road and other roads. And there's nothing to stop a homeowner from just continually calling the DPW if their trees, if there's a negative vote, or if, or if the tree warden even says, you know, no, we're not going to put it on the list. Now, if they think it's gotten worse, they can call the tree warden, I guess. But I think it would be good for the planning board to have a policy that says, our vote is good for a year, or some amount of time, so that the trees don't just keep coming back. Because there are some trees that, you know, there are some people that just don't like trees, let's just say. And they, and they're interested to get that tree down at all cost.
Can I?
Go ahead.
That may be. So I get your point, Deb. My only concern is that in the last year and a half, maybe a year, we've really worked to try to put a process in place, because it did not work prior. And the first big hearing we had had well over 100 and some trees on it. So when we just did the second batch not that long ago, there may have been some overlap, only because, again, you've had two huge hearings. As we go forward, and as it's being done, I expect those people that continue to call, the tree warden is going to know these trees. I didn't expect them to after the first hearing, because there were so many. I would think at some point, it's going to be, people are going to realize there's a problem, and say, that's already been heard, or whatnot. I just, I worry that we didn't, haven't given the process enough time. We're working out kinks with every hearing we have. And again, we all know, things were done the wrong way for a long time. And I think it is, Marnie used the five years, you know? I think we need to give it time and keep tweaking things as we go along, and as we go along. And that may be one of the things that we tweak. I don't disagree. But I think, I don't, I don't know, we've only done two really, two real hearings to say that somebody may be a repeat person coming back. I don't know that necessarily to be true.
I don't know if it's one person.
Or one tree, you know? I don't necessarily know yet. For me, the data's not there to show that that's happening, and that's a problem.
Yeah.
That's all.
So where do we go with this? What's, what's our homework on this? I'd be willing to work on it and, with you, Debbie, and pare it down a little, and make it more of a guideline, more of an educational thing. Do you want to do that? And come back?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So let's move on.
Yeah, I concur. I think the guideline makes sense.
Thank you.
And just again, Debbie, thank you for all the work you put into this.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, six to eight Turnpike Road, request for bond release. Karina?
Hi, Peter.
Hello. Sorry, if you had said to introduce me as I was getting allowed to come on, I wouldn't have heard you. So I apologize.
So Karina's going to give us the rundown.
Okay, a brief outline. Thank you.
Okay, so there was a modification to major site plan at six to eight Turnpike where they put the detention basin. They changed it to an underground stormwater system in order to expand the parking there. So that was done and approved. And part of that was to prepare as built, not only for the modification, but for the original site plan for that facility in the first place. So Peter Bemis provided the as built, which we reviewed at a prior meeting. They went to Fussin O'Neil and comments were addressed. There were two conditions. One was that a handicap accessible sign be installed as the construction details had required with a metal post and an official sign. And then number two is to ensure that the grass, that an area on the eastern side near the utility property, I forget who it is, it's a boss electric company or something, has some property over there, that the grass along, the turf along that side wasn't fully growing grass and that they were going to make sure that within six months that that grass came in. So a notice of vote was filed with the town clerk indicating that. The other stipulation, so during the modification, we required, the planning board required a $5,000 bond in order to ensure as built were prepared and also in operation and management plan for the stormwater was provided. So as you know, Peter also had to go through the conservation commission for permitting for this underground detention. So Peter also provided a signed copy that was provided as part of the SMP or the order of, what do you call it, the certificate of compliance. So we have a signed copy. I checked with Melissa Danza, the conservation agent, and she found this to be acceptable. So those two conditions have been met and Peter submitted a letter requesting that the bond be released. Back to the owner. And that's it.
Anything to add, Mr. Bemis?
All I would say is that the sign was corrected, the seating was completed. And if you could please release the bond, I would be grateful to close this chapter of the project out. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Stein?
No questions at this point.
Ms. Houlihan?
No questions.
Ms. Di Maria?
No questions, thanks.
Ms. Brashio?
No questions, thank you.
So do we need to make a motion or?
Yes, please.
The motion is for the board to approve release of the $5,000 surety bond back to Six Turnpike Road LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none or all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Di Maria, yes.
Brashio, yes. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
We'll submit a notice of vote for that and file it with the town clerk and provide it to the treasurer so that he can be authorized to release that cash.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. 4042 Central Street History and Arts Center, major site plan approval. Karina?
Ms. Latrell, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Oh, okay. Ms. Brashio has recused herself.
Okay, since the last public hearing on June 27th, which was continued to this evening, as you recall, the last meeting was attended by town council and the applicant's attorney, attorney Russell. We received some comments from the Southborough Public Access Committee, also known as the ADA Committee, and referring to some concerns with the ADA layout for the site. So I think the last set of plans had one, reduced it down to one handicap parking space. So that he was commenting on that. The applicant was also granted an extension to tonight with action to July 5th, 14th. So last Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, that's the third, fifth and sixth through the seventh, we received submission number four from Michael Wei Shan with plans dated July 2nd. We sent that submission to Fussin O'Neil. It included actually a revised set of plans as well as several reference documents which were to accommodate Fussin O'Neil's comment, number 13, if you recall, had asked for certain documents in order to compare the drainage designs to see where they stood. We also provided the submission to the town departments and to the planning board for review. And that brings us to this evening. We also have a signed extension request for the public hearing to be continued to July 24th with action by July 28th. And that was because we are waiting for Fussin O'Neil to hopefully provide a final review letter, seeing how we just got these middle last week. Three days is not enough time for them to turn around, but they assured me they'll have comments prior to the next meeting.
Very good.
Oh, I almost forgot. Open Space Preservation Commission is meeting this evening to discuss the project themselves. We got a notice from the chair, Freddie Gillespie. And I referenced the ADA comments. And that's the only new thing. Thanks.
Very good. Mr. Wei Shan, do you want to update the board on what changes have been made?
Sure. Hi, good evening. I do have a quick question before we start. Exactly in what capacity is Open Space meeting on this application?
Yes, so part of major site plan approval, all boards, committees, departments receive a copy of the application to keep them informed and if they would like to comment.
And their comments in this case are advisory because, of course, under the Dover amendment, they don't have a say in this. Am I correct in that assumption?
Well, the commission is advisory, period.
Okay. Well, because, you know, in the last, last go around with John Dela Proscoli, there were actually rules and regulations that were provided to Mr. Proscoli about how he could plant things and, you know, no use of mulch. And that letter did not look at all advisory to me. I was quite curious, in fact, how Open Space was participatory in that process. But happy to hear what they say, but I don't think they have jurisdiction in this matter, obviously. So that was just my only point. Very briefly, because unfortunately, I wasn't prepared to be here tonight because I thought we were going to postpone this until Fussin O'Neil actually finished with their comments. But I can take you very briefly through what was sent back to you. In terms of lighting, we've agreed to the hour restrictions until a lighting plan can be finalized. So I believe that's off the table. The ADA compliance thing was just a mistake on my part. I thought that we had reduced behind, beside, excuse me, underneath, beneath 25 parking spaces, but it turns out we had not. So that was restored back to its original configuration. We adopted, I think it was Debbie's excellent solution about using the post and chain fence around the parking lot to actually delineate the spaces. So there will be a post that appears at each what would have been on a parking lot, SL parking lot, a dividing line. These will be numbered spaces with little tags, I presume, ultimately. It's a nice historical approach, works well aesthetically. You know, it's going to cost 10 grand, but you know, hey. Anyway, so that seems to have settled out the parking thing. We went back and looked at the landscape plan that was previously approved for this that included the landscaping for the parking lot. And it consisted of essentially parking, planting along the north and east borders, which are the sides nearest the railroad tracks. The previously approved planting was hydrangea and lavender or some such, you know, where I'll be using more naturalistic plantings. So we've called for illex fructus latae, which is the deciduous holly. And finally, obviously, also in the previous plan was the granite berm, which is a six inch curbing, which prevents people or persons from driving into these basins. I know there was some concern expressed about the basins in terms of their safety. Under the previous approved plan, they are exactly as they are now. They're only a foot and a half deep. And quite frankly, the slope to get to the playground is a lot steeper than the slope into these basins. So, you know, hopefully, we will be changing this to a system that Mr. Bemis just did for the previous application. But we have what we have for the moment. So I don't, there was no planting or other fencing around the previously approved application. So we've duplicated that. And then the rest of it was things like indicating the snow dump area, all the little bits and pieces that Fussin O'Neil had asked in terms of drafting. So that's about all I have for you. I also did supply the language of the deed for the parking, which states in summary, the town spaces are eight in number, permanent, four floating, all are closed at 5:00, and all can be suspended upon any declaration of an arts event by the society. So it is a rather fluid, in my view, overly fluid arrangement that, as I said, I will hopefully be discussing at some later time. But it will be accommodated for now in this, in this arrangement with these marked spaces once we, once we get there. Hopefully, we may be getting windows in the next two weeks. So we may actually be slowly getting there. But that's all I have for you. Happy to answer any questions about this iteration.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
Thanks, Michael. Regarding the marking of the spaces, could you just please go into a little bit more detail and direct me as to where in the plans, it discusses exactly how the spaces will be marked, given that it's going to be a gravel parking lot?
So each one of, let's see, it's a little hard to read on this, and I apologize. But wherever there's a line, if you look at, what are you guys looking at up there? Are you looking at the?
So I'm looking at...
I'm looking at page four of six.
Yeah, I'm on page four of the site plans dated July 2nd.
Yep. So where it's along where it says vertical gravel berm, there's actually, so there's a post and chain fence that goes right behind it. And each post is at the place where the marker line would be. So essentially, there's a visual indication of where these spaces are. So you have a post and then a loop of a chain, and then another post that will tell you exactly where these parking spaces are.
Oh, okay. And how are the town assigned spaces delineated and marked?
Well, they'll have a tag on them of some sort. Again, the agreement doesn't say where to put them. It says contingent, not contingent, there's a particular word. Karina, what does it say?
Contiguous to Central Street.
Contiguous to Central Street, which means nothing, actually. So, you know, my guess is that we'll put them at the far end, closest to the parking lot. There's actually a crosswalk there, very poorly marked at the moment. But, and so we'll just mark those spaces at the end. I don't know, maybe with a different color tag on the chain or in some such way.
And where in the plans does it go into the hours, given that there will be no lighting?
I don't think the plans address that. I presumed it would be in some sort of agreement.
So you're, we're going to just do that through the our conditions in the decision?
Yes, I guess so.
And we had also discussed at the last meeting landscaping around the parking?
Yes, and we did address that. And as I said, it will mimic the, it's on page five of six. It mimics the previously approved scheme, which was just some sort of hedge-like planting scheme behind the granite. In other words, a visual barrier there along the back, the back and the side.
Okay, that's it for me. Thanks.
Ms. Houlihan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wei Shan, for addressing the planning board's feedback. I think you've addressed everything. I think the only thing that we talked about was the number of events, but I think that would be part of the condition language as well, where we talked about 36 times per year with 72 events per year.
Yeah, I mean, again, that was, again, you know, we're trying to be aspirational. We have to get this thing up and rolling. I can share with you our projection document, which sort of shows you the rollup, but it's essentially a third, two thirds, three thirds. So 36 gets you in three years hence time. You know, obviously, there's a lot to be done here. You have to move into this building. You have to design the course material. You have to design the classes, find the instructors, get the stuff advertised, get people into the building. So it'll be a very slow ramp up over the course of, well, I mean, if we can get this done in the first months of 2024, that would be grand. And then over 2024, 25, 26, God, you know, I'll be immeasurably old by then. I'm sorry. It's hard to contemplate that, that time stretch. But yeah.
But it sounds like we're still in alignment, that even though that's a three-year or futuristic, that's something we could put into the conditional language.
Yeah, although I will remind you that even at our maximum capacity, the type of events that were predicted under the old previously approved permit were larger than this. I mean, they were talking about auction sales and all sorts of auction events and things like that. So I, you know, this, the building at its maximum capacity for these classes, I mean, you're, we're predicting class sizes of 15 people. I mean, you know, that's not huge, you know, 15 to 20 people. What is that? You know, normally people come together. So let's say 10 cars. So I don't, I really think this is a very low density use for this structure.
Nope, that's fair. I think to compare it to the previous uses, we couldn't do that, though, because I think you're imparting the Dover amendment for an educational facility. So I just want to make sure we cover all our bases. Thank you again.
I got it. Thank you.
Mr. Maria?
Hi, Michael. Thanks for...
Hi.
Hi there. Thanks for making the changes. I don't have anything further. I also agree some of this can be worked out in the conditions. So I look forward to seeing the wording on the conditions. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wei Shan. I think that, that post and chain fence was a fabulous idea.
All right, because I got beaten up earlier. So I get credit for Michael's...
No, no, I agree. I actually think I, that came right out of a really good historical playbook that I had not considered. So we have to find the money for it because it's just phenomenally expensive, these iron posts and these chains. But yeah, it's a great idea.
So the, so the landscape plan doesn't show any landscaping. The layout plan.
It shows the, I'm on page five of six, and it's, shows you landscape hedge, illex verticillata.
Yeah, that's the layout plan. So there's a landscape plan that has no landscaping on it.
Site plan, what, what page is that? Mimi, are you referring to?
Four.
You know, I, I don't know why that is. Where is that page labeled even? I, I'm always, I'm looking at this, the landscaping seems to be on page five, but where's the, where are these, where are the page, plan title, layout? Yes, okay. I think that's just a typo. I'm sorry. I think we can correct that. It's just that there must be a typo.
So, and also, on the landscaping, we need the precise species. You said, you had said holly, but what's listed there is a winter berry, but it's in quotation marks, which makes me think that it's not a exact species, it's.
Well, again, illex verticillata is the, the species type. There are a lot of native ar cultivars of this. We will look into that as we get a little closer.
So, so it needs to be a straight native species.
Okay, so I'm afraid I'm going to have to disagree with you there.
Well, Michael.
Well, no. Okay, so first of all, I think we're being pretty generous here in giving you everything you've asked for. I think, and this is something I'd like to talk to you about at some other time, and not on the Southwestern Historical Society's dollar, but limiting this to straight species is a really bad idea.
It's one plant, Michael. You have one plant listed.
Well, I think that what we would list are native ars, which are native cultivars of illex verticillata.
So a couple of things. Our bylaw requires native species. The master plan requires native species. The hazarded mitigation plan requires native species. Town code requires native species. And, excuse me, and your stormwater permit requires native species.
Native species are native ars.
No, they're not.
Yes, yes. Excuse me, Mimi. I'm sorry. Mimi, you are interrupting me. Mimi, I am a nationally recorded landscape designer. I have built projects all over this country. I've worked in this field for 40 years. I work with conservation commissions of practically every town in eastern Massachusetts. Every conservation commission outside of this town has come to the conclusion in the last 20 years that a lot of the cultivars, now called native ars of native species, are far more effective and far more beneficial to wildlife, including pollinators, than some of the straight species are. Illex verticillata is a perfect example of that. The straight species produces, I don't know, let's just say 50 berries a plant. Some of the native ar cultivars produce hundreds of berries.
But they're huge, and birds can't eat them.
No, they're not huge.
All right, so I don't want to, so what you need to do is say exactly what it is that's going to be used. By definition, a native ar is not native. You need to show exactly how many plants are going to be used. Just this depiction of the scribbles isn't.
Well, excuse me, you interrupted me again. The scribbles are exactly what was on the previous approved site plan. And the previous approved site plan had hydrangea.
But this is a different plan, Michael.
I know, but what, two years ago, this was approved as something totally different. We've gone a long way.
Okay, so it also had a lot of trees. Are you going to also plant?
It did not have a lot of trees. I mean, it had trees that were all rejected in the plan because Mr. Delapriscoli wanted London plane trees. Also, as I reminded this board, this is under major power lines that string down the street, so it's not an ideal location for street trees. So, you know, again, I'm happy to tell you, you know, what, you know, what we'll be planting, but we are duplicating exactly the layout that was here on the previous plan. And I, I will also say, I work in this field professionally. I'm considered an expert, a national expert on this. And when you say native ars are not native species, I'm afraid, Mimi Lutrelle, you are incorrect. And so, you know, I think part of the issue here, and again, I'm not going to be the proponent of this, or I'm happy to donate my time to you and another time to come in and talk to you about what other conservation commissions and board and where the science has progressed over the last 20 years in terms of what are the best native species to use. But I'm not going to have that discussion with you now. So what, just tell me if you wanted me to tell you what precisely this is going to be, I'm happy to do it. But I'm following exactly what was approved by this board two years ago.
So if you're following exactly, they had eight trees also.
I did not see eight trees in the previous plan. But again, your jurisdiction in planting extends only to the planting, parking, landscape stuff, and does not extend beyond that via the Dover.
Correct, which requires trees.
Which is a very generous, you know, last week, town council came in, waved his hands around, and said that you had a very generous interpretation of this, of these Dover regulations. Our council actually sent you a very learned brief explaining precisely the case law as to why this was not applicable and why planning boards had lost over exactly these same kind of issues. He glossed all over that and just waved his hands around and said, well, that's not what I agree with. Well, you know, again, in order to move this forward and to get our history and arts center forward, we've made a lot of these concessions. But that doesn't mean that this is correct or that we are required to do this. We are trying our best to come up with something that we can afford to do. You know, Mimi, where would you plant trees on this? You can't plant them in front of the building.
So, Michael, I'm just saying, you keep referring to the 2019 plan that you've duplicated, but you have not duplicated. That's, that's the only point I'm trying to make.
Well, we've duplicated the landscape planting, which is what you have jurisdiction over.
Well, but landscaping.
It's even drawn the same way.
Well, no, because it had trees in the landscaping.
Where would these trees have been cited as part of the parking? There was, there, with, all there was, was, as a matter of fact, I think we resubmitted these plans to you as part of this last package so that you could reference them as to what was there previously.
Right, and I'm referencing them.
And so what do you see around the parking lot? You see a bunch of squiggles that look exactly like what we're showing you now.
Right, and along the street in front of the parking lot are trees.
Yes, and I'm telling you, that was terribly unrealistic, because no one could have ever planted full-size street trees there because of the wires. Again, please take a look at that site and see these huge telephone poles with not one, but multiple cables running down the road. How would you have planted street trees along that site? It, it's just not possible.
Well, that's not the argument. The argument is, you said you duplicated the 2019 plan, but you didn't.
All right, so let, you know, I'll grant you the semantics.
So moving on from there. The snow dump area is right behind that hedge, so the snow's going to get plowed on top of that hedge. How will they live through that?
Illex verticillata is pretty short in most cases, so I presume that's where the snow dump area was previously. That's where the snow dump area is now. If we need to make a break in that hedge in order to do that, then that's exactly what we're going to do. But again, you see, this is the same thing that, that is up there, exactly the same as previous. I mean, maybe the reality is we'll break, we'll make an eight-foot break in that hedge right at that point, so that they can, you know, push that, or maybe it'll be snowballed. I mean, you know, the, I, I'm sure that can be worked out. It was there previously, and obviously, there was a plan for it.
Just to interject, Michael, is the difference between what you're proposing and what Mimi's proposing because you believe the plants are better or because they're less expensive? Like, what's the main reason you would object to putting in the species that the plant?
Well, because, for just what I said. So illex verticillata, the straight species, is a fine plant, but there's been a lot of intensive, intensive work done with illex verticillata, which is one of the reasons I chose it, winter berry is its common name, to make it more palatable to a wide variety, not only to people, you know, colored berries. And the berries aren't any bigger or smaller. They're the same size, but they're sometimes different colors, but they're born in infinite profusion. And so if you're talking about what's beneficial to birds, obviously, you would want something with 500 berries as opposed to 50. Actually, what we're proposing is probably more expensive, because the straight species is generally cheaper, because no one wants it anymore. So, you know, again, I, we just finished a huge project in Needham, right on the Charles River, and planted a lot of this similar material, including these cult of native ars, as they're called, with the conservation commission and with their full support, because they understand that some of these plants are just definitely better for everybody, man, beast, bird.
Has the conservation commission been updated on this change of the vegetation? Are they on board with it? Because it does say the SM.
Well, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I can certainly call them this tomorrow. I mean, the last, again, the, the plan that they're operating under with their current approval listed hydrangea and French lavender. I mean, you can't get more exotic than that, you know.
It's just this specific application that is the point of contention, so, you know, it's, it seems like it's something that could be worked out one way or another, because we're moving along pretty good here.
Well, you know, and again, I'm happy to provide you with a plant list of this stuff and, you know, to show you, it's going to be probably just one, one thing along the, along the back. But the only part that we're talking about is the part that is contiguous to the parking, you know, and that is what we, in good faith, duplicated for this evening's meeting, using native-based materials, I will add.
Right, but we need the specific number and size in the specific species, which is how every other landscape plan has been done in this town. And including the 2019 plan had a planting schedule of the exact plants and the number and the size.
I'm happy to count dots and have that added to the plan, because that's what we're talking about here.
And they need to be a certain size, not below a certain size. And.
I will, I will conform with the law. Thank you.
And the construction details, still, it's not showing the Cape Cod berm?
There is no Cape Cod berm. It's been replaced with.
Oh, the granite.
Granite.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. And I have, I have some comments on conditions. Do you want those now, or do you want me to send them to you?
Why don't you send them to me, and I will draft a decision over the next several days.
Okay.
And then we'll circulate them. Moving forward.
Moving forward.
Does anyone in the public have any comment on this?
We have four attendees, no hands raised.
No one here in the hall?
Sorry.
Anything else? Move along.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Michael. That was very good. Thank you.
So the motion is to extend the decision deadline on major site plan approval, 40-42 Central Street, to July 28, 2023.
Second. I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Lutrelle, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuriya, yes.
Next motion is that this public hearing for major site plan approval, 40-42 Central Street, be continued to July 24, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
Second. I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Lutrelle, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuriya, yes.
And that action, this is that action was to July 28, right?
Yes. 24.
So the, the motion that passed was to extend the decision deadline to July 28.
Correct, that's what I needed.
And the second motion was to extend the public hearing to July 24.
Got it.
At 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Deerfoot Road School Bus Turnaround. Is this you, Karina?
Yes. So to get the planning board just up to speed on this topic, Deerfoot Road, south of Route 9, relatively narrow road, down towards the end, the school bus, the, the school department can't send a regular bus down there. It's too tight to turn. So they asked if, and it's also, I guess it's expensive to send a special bus down there, a special-sized bus, to pick up several of the children who live there. So several months ago, I met with Keith Lavoy, the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and we looked at the location, and he's been, he met with Abdul, the interim DPW director, and tried to formulate a, a solution. So there was a kind of a concept plan that came out with a paved turnaround area, but there's really no, it's not on a list for funding, it's a construction project, would require land taking, et cetera. So the school pointed out, they had a report done, and it pointed out five things that were interfering with the turnaround, some relatively simple fixes compared to, you know, constructing a complete paved turnaround. And those things were some mailbox, a mailbox from 141 Deerfoot, mailboxes that are located on private property that is, property that's owned by the Bartolines and two of the butters there. There's a section of stone wall, albeit somewhat dismantled, in front of a utility pole in front of 141, which is in town right-of-way. And then there's a small section of stone wall that is in town right-of-way in front of the butter, which is Margaret Landry's property on the south side of the plan. So the school had a plan, this plan drafted to point those things out. So I had instructed them that, you know, if they wanted to have those certain features moved, they would have to, you know, provide a stamped plan by a surveyor that showed what is town right-of-way there and what's on what, so that we're not, the planning board isn't giving approval to remove stone walls on private property, et cetera. There's also some rose bushes that are located down at the end as you're heading towards the EMC property, Dell EMC. And so it was found that those rose bushes, they're beautiful, they've been there a long time, they are on town property, as is a small section of the fence line, the little triangular piece where it says fence right up there. So right, no, yeah, right there, that one little strip right there, that is interfering with the school bus turnaround. So I informed that, that for, for the stone wall in front of the utility pole on the left, there's like a little checker circle there, and the little stone wall that we just pointed out near the fence there, and the rose bushes would require scenic road stone wall and tree removal, because they're on town right-of-way or touching town right-of-way. So I have a call-in to Chris Leroy, the tree warden designee, to determine if the bushes are jurisdictional under this, because it does say in MGL that not just trees, but bushes. And if there's a public. because it does say in MGL that not just trees, but bushes. And if there's a public hearing for that, then it's a scenic road, it has to be consolidated public hearing. So, that can all be handled at one public hearing. So, I asked them to, I asked them to tweak the plan. There were some things that they still had to clarify. So, they were working on getting that plan ready, and then they were going to submit the application relatively soon. Now, they were hoping to get this all addressed prior to the school year starting because they want to get that remedied. So, I haven't heard from them lately, but they did say they were working on it. In the meantime, I know, you know, I did talk to Marguerite Landry, who was in communication now with the superintendent. She had missed his calls or something. So, they finally connected, and hopefully they can work something out there because she would like to salvage those rose bushes and maybe have them relocated onto her property or somewhere to be saved. So, everything's working out amiably. Is that the right word?
Amicably.
Amicably, yeah. I'm not the best at language. So, that's where that stands. So, when they do submit their application, that will be, be coming in front of the planning board and then the rose bushes probably consolidated public hearing, part of that public hearing.
So, just a question. Does that require newspaper ads?
Yes.
And does that timing, does it all work? Like, is there a certain date that we should tell them they have to have it in, in order for this to all be done before the school year?
Yes. They, they've been made aware probably several times in emails and in conversations that a lead time for a public hearing is about three and a half weeks by law. That's three weeks, two weeks in the paper and the next week is the planning board meeting. However, with trees in the past, we were able to do like a Friday and a consecutive Monday, so you hit two weeks. So, that might save a week. So, we'll do anything we can to expedite it, but we just need to get their submission. So, we've been helping them and-
Can I ask a question, Mimi? Karina, can we find out as they move forward as well? I'm just curious. I'm looking at the pictures of the rose bushes. Are those in any way embedded within the stone wall that could potentially create an issue? Can we just find that out? I'm just looking ahead, thinking-
Yeah.
You know, it's great to relocate them, but if they're embedded within the stone wall, it might be a little bit more difficult.
I went down there and I didn't pay super attention to the roots, but they seem to be forward of the wall. But like I said, Marguerite came in a couple, has came in and Keith Lavoy has come in, so we'll double check that, too.
So, the, be able to get the big bus down there and turn around with these tweaks?
I'm not sure about the full size. It's just not the mini bus. It's, it'll be like an in-between intermediate-sized bus that will-
Oh, I didn't know they were, I didn't know there were three flavors. I thought there were two.
All right.
Karina, I, I have a question. Is there any pavement that's going to be added? So, I just, I found this like just a little bit confusing because I, the write-up, it didn't sound like they have everybody's agreement yet, but it sounds like that the Butter is Marguerite and she's in process. But, actually, so one question first. Who's going to put in the application?
So, initially, I thought it was going to be the school department, but it turns out that they worked with 141 and it might be 126.
Okay.
I don't know that, it's two of the-
The two that sign the letter.
Residents, yeah.
137, okay.
And there's no, the paving is not part of the jurisdiction of the scenic road, stone wall, and tree removal application. If the school or resident wanted something paved, they would have to go to the DPW and either get on a list or ask for a repair or something like that. That's not site plan or scenic road jurisdiction.
I'm just curious, what's the arrangement now? Does the bus just not get up there and the kids have to walk down?
No. The, there's a small proprietary bus, I would guess. I don't know exactly what bus, but they've told me it's an expensive cost and it's a small bus that can get up there.
Oh, that, I get what you're using.
And it's cost prohibitive to continue to do that. So, the kids are getting picked up down there. They don't, I guess in the past, there was conversations of them down by Route 9, and that was not acceptable because of the safety concerns and all that. So, at this point, this would be a good fix for the near future. And again, the mailbox is a private property and US Postal Service jurisdiction, and there's only the small section of stone wall and then near the utility wall and the rose bushes.
Anything else on this one? Thank you, Karina. Onward, a discussion item, 120 Turnpike Road, 40B Mass Housing Request for Town Comment. Want to update us on this one?
So, if you recall, maybe a month and a half, two months ago, Ferris Development made a presentation to the Select Board for potential 40B at 120 Turnpike. This is a triangular piece of that property that came before the planning board in 2019 where they wanted to build a parking garage, and then that piece was going to be donated or given to the town. Ownership changed and that kind of fell apart. So, the next step was for Ferris Development to submit an application to Mass Housing Financial Agency. I guess it's a friendly 40B where they're coming in to try and work things out with the town. And a letter was received from Mass Housing requesting town comment with a certain deadline. Mark Purple has since yesterday asked for an extension of that deadline to Matt from Mass Housing to August 18th. So, is it 15? August 15th, giving the boards a little bit more time. There's also going to be a site visit, as was, it is the 18th? August 18th. There's going to be a site visit on July 25th at 10:30 AM, and they want to know who will be attending, per se. So, if you plan on attending, then we'll let Mark Purple know and they'll get back to Mass Housing through the Select Board, since the, they're kind of working through them now. There has been no official ZBA application yet for 40B. So, we're still in the interim stages.
Well, this is the eligibility letter. That's step one.
Step one.
Mr. Stein?
So, I have a question about the original Board of Appeals, variance certification in 2005, that variance decision cites on page, just had it, three. The applicant is proposing no construction or change in the existing use of the property as part of this application. So, how does that come into play here?
I don't know. I have to read it more thoroughly and then may need some town council opinion.
Okay.
Was, was that variance? Who was the applicant?
This was for the Realty Associates Fund, Roman numeral six, LP, special permit to permit office uses in excess of 50,000 square feet.
And also, it was a variance.
Right.
The difference being that the variance runs with the land.
Oh, right. Thank you. That was my, that's where I was going with it.
Can you repeat that? That the variance runs with the property and a special permit goes with the-
The use.
The use. Is it, did I say that right?
I think that's the way it works, isn't it?
Yes. Yep.
So, by that logic, then the land is bound by the variance, right?
So, that's a very good question. The reason I asked this be included is because it also said a third building is not permitted by this decision.
Right. So, no new construction, no change of use being part of the variance decision, to me, is problematic.
And the, and the question is, if we had town council, I think this would be a good question, except for town council has made clear that he works for the Select Board. And the Select Board, as part of their goals for this year, one of them is to move this 40B through.
Do you suggest we file an appeal, pro se?
Yeah.
Sorry. Bad joke.
But I, so, I don't know what that means. So, they, when Ferris was before the Select Board doing the presentation, they said that they were going to A&R that lot, but they, they have no frontage and they can't. And that is not a part of local zoning. That's a part of Mass General Law subdivision control. So, they're not exempt from, from frontage for an A&R. But then if they, if they keep it, is that, does the whole lot become the 40B? And then, so, it's very confusing. But there's some, there are some confusing questions there.
So, can I ask a question on-
Sure.
Legal counsel? I thought I heard town council say he primarily works for the Select Board and supports the Select Board if there's an opposing viewpoint with the planning board. And I don't know that there's an oppo, I don't know if I heard that correctly or maybe I was just thinking that's what I heard. But, I mean, it's going to be problematic because all boards need support from town council. And I kind of feel like he didn't disagree. I mean, because we know that he has supported us sometimes, Jake Towarman, Attorney Towarman, and he also supports the ZBA sometimes. So, I thought what I heard him say was that if there's an opposing viewpoint, he can't represent, he can't advise another board. I'm not sure there's an opposing viewpoint. I would think that especially the Chair of the Select Board, who's a former ZBA member, would understand that these, these variances and permits are binding. And so, I, I'd like to see if he could advise us on it.
That's a very good point, actually. Since we're not actually taking an adversarial or countering position on this, we're really just raising a question. So, I would agree with Mr. Maria.
I agree, plus they haven't put an application in. So, I think if this is from an informational perspective, so we are doing our diligence, so we're prepared, I think that's reasonable from a request.
Any comment, Ms. Barshio?
Well, I think we can certainly start there. I'll just leave it at that. Though, I will say as well that they, they did get in the decision, there was a 75-foot variance from the frontage requirements as well, which is huge. It's in the first paragraph, number three, a 75-foot variance from the frontage requirements of sections 174, 8.5 E2 of the zoning bylaw to allow a total frontage of 125 feet.
But how, how does that impact A&R?
That's my question. Again, I'm, I'm new. So, Jesse, I'm just saying that, that in, in, and again, I'm new with this, but in reading the last paragraph before the signature, it says that they found that for a third building, the variance was never exercised and a third building is not permitted by this decision. So, thinking of the A&R, if there was a variance to give these two buildings frontage, would that also apply if they A&R the lot to the new lot? I don't know the answer.
Well, so if they A&R'd the new lot, that lot would have to have frontage. So, those, that, so it's one big lot now, and it has frontage. It's just not adequate, and they received a variance for that.
Right. Okay.
But if they cut off that triangle, the residential piece, there is no frontage and there's no way to gain frontage. So, I, so they, I can't for the life of me, and I'm not an attorney, figure out how they would do that. But A&R is pretty cut and dry. Does it have frontage? Yes, it's an A&R. Does it not? No, it's not. It's a subdivision.
Right. So, could we, between now and our next meeting, get an opinion from counsel on this? So, as we move forward with the site walk, as well as writing a letter, we have all of the facts and we can determine if we believe those to be the facts in case.
Yeah, yeah.
Could I ask for a clarification on what you want me to ask him? Because I want to be very precise. Are we asking about the prior decision and what it, what it has jurisdiction over?
Well, not to answer, ask, answer a question with a question. Is there an A&R coming before us? That's not, that's, I'm asking you if there's an A&R in the pipeline.
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. Because when we met, with pre-meetings, when they were coming in to talk to us about what they were deciding to do, I had mentioned this concern that how are you going to access the 40B? Are you going to cut a new roadway in using the 118, 120 Turnpike property, which would then impact the existing site plan for those? Because then it would need a modification for the remaining lots. And then also, if they're impacting frontage again there, do they need to go back to the ZBA and ask for a variance for the frontage to be further reduced for those two properties? So, there were all these questions. And I think they felt that they could use access through the driveway of 118, 120 to get to that site. And at that point, it wasn't clear to me, it's still not clear, if they have, if, if that is something that is exempted through the 40B process, if that is zoning, but Mimi is indicating that it's a subdivision aspect.
So, in their application, there's a site approval application, that Colleen was nice enough to give us all copies. In the project description, it says, "The overall property consists of 20.48 acres of land located both highway business and rez aid districts. The project includes creation of a separate eight-acre lot at the south end of the property located entirely in the residential aid district."
So, yes, it's coming back to me. They were going to A&R a lot, the triangle lot. And I said, "Well, that's not a buildable lot because you don't have frontage." And that's where the confusion came in. So, I'm not clear. So, yes, they had mentioned that, I believe, in informal discussions with me.
Okay.
I think you were there. You recall that. Colleen was with me because she has a lot of knowledge of 40Bs.
Well, so the one, maybe, do we all agree that we have a question as to whether or not an A&R is coming? Okay. So, we're all curious about that.
But that, would that be a town council question?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I just add too? Under the page five of what Colleen was so wonderful to give us, it also does say, "The construction of a 60-unit apartment building with parking and utilities on the new lot." So, they're definitely planning on doing an A&R.
I think we have the conversation come back to easement or-
What, just saying?
I believe the conversation went back to if an easement was going to be good enough for front, frontage through those other properties.
Right.
An access easement. Right. And I-
But that's not frontage.
No. No, it's not frontage. And that's why I was concerned. I said, "You need to make sure, get legal opinion on their side as a developer. Are you really able to do that? Are you really able to just create a lot and just say, 'Well, I'm going through this parking lot driveway to get to my 40B'?" Because you're kind of doing like a site plan piece now again, and then the-
I mean, ultimately, I'm sorry to-
No, that's okay.
Ultimately, it's our decision as a board whether or not we endorse it. All I, I'll, I think all we're suggesting is asking for town council's opinion. Now, we may disregard that and vote not to endorse it or endorse it. We may do anything. But I think it would just be helpful to us to know what Mr. Towarman's thoughts are. But I think it would just be helpful to us to know what Mr. Towarman's thoughts are on, how he would interpret an A and R under those.
In the process of crafting comments, a comment letter, too. You could bring it up and then.
So could, can you do an AR without, an A and R without any frontage?
I've seen it done in the past. It was land that was being given to a water district, and the planning board did ask those questions and they signed it. But it was, again, not a buildable lot.
Yeah, but this is definitely intended to be a buildable lot.
Right.
So we've done that before, like little pieces that are gonna be put on other things. But that's not what this is. They're trying to create a buildable lot, which you need frontage for.
I think the question is, can they get away with an easement for frontage?
I don't.
I believe the state law says that you have to use your own land to enter land.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and then, the other question was, in the, going back to our earlier discussion about the variance, and maybe I pointed out that the variance survives with the land. And this variance decision is based on no, no additional construction and no changes of use.
No third building.
That's in the variance, too.
What number is that, the third building on?
It's at the very end of the decision on page five, right before the signature.
You mean kind of a, a reverse corollary? Like, they weren't proposing a third building, so they were telling them, "This doesn't allow you to have a third building." It's not, you're not allowed to, it's kind of like a weird, it sounded like.
Mimi, where do you see?
No, it says, "A third building is not permitted by this decision."
Wasn't exercised?
It's at the very end.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that.
You just had it. Yeah, 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 okay.
So it's, it's referring to a previous 1984 decision in which a third building was authorized. But that was never exercised. So it's making clear that in this decision, a third building is not permitted. That's how I, that's how my non-lawyerly skills read that.
Yeah, I would agree.
If an A and R is approved, for some weird reason, even if it doesn't hit the frontage, where does the variance live? Does it go with the A and R?
So I think if an A and R was approved, and that's cut off from that lot, then, then this would survive.
The new lot.
Yeah, it'd be a completely, it would be a different lot.
So the variance stays with the original lot, not the little triangle they're.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted to add, in the A and R handbook, there's a bunch of cases, case law, that talks about like, some of these kind of maneuvers of splitting off, you know, whether it's under subdivision control or A and R. And some of them are not legal. And I think I'm gonna go back and read them and try to understand it. But if there's anything, I'll let you know.
Well, you gotta, I mean, we could do anything. We could make any, we could condition a decision that everybody has to, Don Morris used to say, "Everybody has to wear a red hat on the site."
But an A and R.
It's gonna get challenged in court eventually. So, we could do anything here, but.
We can't condition an A and R, though. We either endorse it or we don't.
Right. My point being, if, if, if we endorse something that wasn't legal, that, a resident or somebody could eventually challenge an appeal that. If we don't endorse it, there's all kinds of recourse for a proponent when it is legal. I think it actually gets, that's, this hasn't happened since I've been on this board, but isn't, isn't it correct that if we didn't endorse a legal A and R, it would just be constructively approved anyway?
If, if we didn't act on it within a certain amount of time.
So if we vote not to endorse a legal A and R?
It's appealable to court.
That has to go through the courts? Okay. I didn't know that.
Because if by not endorsing it, you're saying it requires a subdivision.
Yeah.
Correct, right? If you're not endorsing it.
That has to go to court.
Well, if, yeah, if.
I thought it went to the ZBA, but.
Get away with that. We got rid of that.
For A and Rs, though?
No.
Okay. Well, anyway, we're getting. Did we cover all the questions?
So my, my question would be, A, is, can you do an A and R if there's zero frontage? And B, if they left the lot in one piece and the whole thing was a 40B, how would this variance affect those two buildings that are there? Would that mean that they're, they're no longer in compliance?
Yes, how is variance affected? If they break off the lot?
So, can they break? How do you do an A and R without frontage?
Can you do an A and R without?
And if they don't break it off, I assume the whole thing would be a 40B with ancillary non-residential development, which is allowed, but ancillary residential development, as we know, is not. How that would affect those two buildings?
How affects the remaining property?
Yeah.
I mean, no, it would all be one property, but.
Yeah.
How does it affect the?
Like, this variance says no third building. So if there was a third building on the site, because they couldn't A and R.
How does it affect the decision of the variance?
Yeah.
Right, this, how does it affect that? Does that still hold? Does this hold to the two buildings? Does, or does it? Right, because variance has run with the.
Yeah, and so, so a 40, so this is like mind-bending.
Yeah.
So a 40B, you can bypass local zoning, but you can't bypass mass zoning, like mass general law. And so there's frontage required in, under mass general law. And subdivision control isn't local, that's mass general law. So it's very, it's confusing.
Muddy.
Muddy.
I just want to add that in the application, under site characteristics, it says, there's a question and answer section on page eight of 25. "Are there any easements, rights of way, or other restrictions of record affecting the development of the site?" And the applicant stated, "No."
What page again, Debbie?
I don't know if I agree. I mean, though, it's weird, funny, that's page eight. Oh, yeah. And so.
Yeah, so that's something for a comment letter.
That's a comment. And there's probably others.
Anything else on that? Does anyone want to go to the site walk at 10:30 a.m. on the 25th? So, Ms. Braschio, Ms. Houlihan, I would like to also. Mr. Maria.
Should we post an agenda? I can't recall if we did it for Park Central.
So we can go on a site walk, but we can't deliberate. So if we just go and listen and ask questions, but don't give our opinion. But if you want to cover us, I guess you could post an agenda for a site walk. And then we could be free and loose.
I just wanted to mention, the last, Mimi, the last time they, they went out, that they didn't want other people on the property. Do you recall that? They didn't want public, this was the Park Central, when they were looking at that again, to have the walk on, they didn't want just anybody coming on the property.
Well, and to add to that, we did receive an email that says, "Please see Mass Housing's Town Comment Request Letter in connection with the above referenced 40B proposal attached. A site visit has been tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, July 25th at 10:30 a.m. Please let me know if this date presents any problems. Should representatives from the town be interested in attending? We can be flexible that week and will adjust if any comments from the town or proposal lie due July 31st, which has been extended."
So they only want?
I think board members.
Board members?
Yeah.
Not the, okay. Oh, so we couldn't post a meeting, no?
Yeah, if you have a public meeting, you have to be open to the public.
Oh, that is a good point.
Yes, there. So don't post an agenda and don't deliberate.
Just don't deliberate.
Yeah.
Ask questions and don't give answers.
Are we sure the public's not invited? They should, if the public has a question, they should confirm also with the select board who this went to, but if you're sure.
It, it's not an official, it's not on any docket in town, so it's not anything that the public can really comment on until they apply for the zoning board meetings.
There's no application, right?
Okay.
She's right.
Just want to make sure.
So anything else on this? And so at the, I guess the meeting after the site walk, we can work on comments.
So that's, Corinne, it would be really helpful if you can put it like, a requested date for Councilman Towarman's feedback, so that it coincides with either right before our site walk, if that's possible, but definitely before our meeting.
Okay.
So maybe give him like a date that we'd ideally like, that's not crazy.
Deadline date for response to legal opinion request for prior to site walk. Okay, which is 7:25 at this point. Okay.
And that brings us to.
Planner's report.
The planner's report.
It's not this. I'm just letting you know. Okay. So, a couple of quick things. We got an update from Chris Leroy, an update on National Grid's approved vegetation or management plan for April 2023 and March 2024. We received this on June 30th. The work on the remaining sections of this plan will be getting underway approximately mid-July and running into August. He met with representatives from both National Grid and the trimming contractor to go over expectations and notifications during this work. National Grid and Chris Leroy will be involved in monitoring the work to ensure expectations we both have are being met. They will have specific start date sometime next, with this would have been this week, and will share that information when it comes available. The feeder circuits they will be doing are in the plan as 310W3 and 310W6. Those were referenced then. I know there was a question, again, regarding the rules and regulations of public bodies, chapter 43, so Mimi had sent me a note about this. And then my recollection came back that we had talked about that, regarding when you have to have a, a public hearing for rules and regulations.
So my reading of that is if, if you're empowered by statute, but town clerk had a different understanding?
No, I think it, it was, I think it was similar. I'd have to check my notes. But say, like, for the updated outdoor illumination, and we had the rules and regulations, those rules and regulations are promulgated and controlled by the planning board. Therefore, if we change those, and when we did create them, there was a public hearing and accepted them at a public hearing, if those were to be updated, it should be through a public hearing process. Same as with, I'm not sure the design guidelines fall under that. They might, because in the bylaw for downtown district, it says that the planning board promulgates that. But, for example, we were talking about this because of the scenic road tree policy, which isn't anywhere in the code that says the planning board has jurisdiction of promulgating that. It just would be in a, kind of a floating document. So if that's different, I'll report back next planner's report. But I don't think it said anything too different.
Can I just get clarification on what town clerk said on that?
I don't have it right here. Let me see. I'd have to look back in my email and notes on this.
So I, I asked chairman of the select board, Mr. Dennington, and, I mean, he, he wrote with, you know, input from the boards and everything. And I, I think it's his position that this only pertains to, section 43 rules, is only rules and regs, and not policy, not guidelines, not, you know, other, other documents. I think I have that in writing, because I, I, you know, as a private citizen, I feel that, you know, this is really addressing that the public has a right to know. And there are, we, we seem to, as a town, kind of blur the line between policy and guidelines and rules and regs at times. I'm not saying the planning board does, but if you look on the select board policies, some of them are how-to, you know, if a person wants to know how to apply for a license, a liquor license, that's definitely, you know, a how-to. I don't know if that's a policy, but it's called a policy. So it doesn't follow this. So Mr. Dennington told me, when he wrote this, he, his thought was this was only applicable to rules and regs.
For example, lower impact development special permit has rules and regulations.
Okay.
That's referenced in the bylaw, and then it also is called rules and regulations. The outdoor illumination are called rules and regulations. The additional, the supplemental information, that's referenced in the bylaw.
Okay.
And it does say specifically in the chapter 43, the rules and regulations.
Okay, and then, but you said town clerk has a different?
No, I don't know. We were talking about it before, I just can't remember, because I, we talk about a lot of things, so I, sometimes you don't have time to write it all down, but I'm sure I have a note somewhere. If not, I'll talk to him again and ask him. And then I will write down my note.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just interested, no, that's all. Thank you. Not urgent.
No problem. I got a call from Larri Davis, who's the ZBA admin, and she said that the ZBA, when they do their special permits, they always ref, referred in their findings to when the special permits lapse. So in mass general law, it says up to three years, you can have the, but a, a, the local town can say one year or two year, et cetera. So I know that in the planning board decisions, we have special permits for the lid, we always specifically say shall lapse within two years. So, in chapter 174-9, which is special permits, there's a, the, one of the beginning paragraphs, I think she was going to work on including some kind of a statement that said across the board that unless otherwise specified somewhere else in the code, it would be a three-year or two-year. I think she said three-year, or max. When you go to the lid, I think it specifically says two years there. There are other places where there are special permits, like the Business Village District, the Downtown District, signs, the major residential development, the lid, solar, the adaptive reuse, and 174-19 non-conforming uses. So to cover all that, instead of changing each one of those specific bylaw languages, to just put it in the beginning of 174-9. So she was gonna work on drafting language like that. And then also, this was kind of triggered because in 174-25A3, which talks about, there's another piece there that is a variance, something lasts one way, I'd have to look it up again. But the number, number A3 didn't have that same specific language. So they were going to hopefully add that in that section as well. And I can be more specific once she provides.
So they're looking to amend that section of the zoning code?
174-9, right at the beginning.
Because, because we had talked about that, but not for this specific thing, but for having special permits that require site plan come before the planning board, so it would be a one-stop shop.
Yes.
So if it's, if they're going to be tweaking that, maybe we should tweak, tweak with them.
Yeah, and if you, can you just scroll to 170, 174-25A3? 174-25. Just quickly, and I can, Board of Appeals, and then. Just quickly, and I can, Board of Appeals, and then A3. So you see here, in A3. Yeah, one of them, special permits and variances. One of them defines a timeframe of the decision lapsing, and the other one doesn't. And they wanted to just make it clear, so it's, nobody questions it that they would do the same thing. So if you scroll up a little bit on that, number two. Oh, it was clear at one point. Anyway, I'll, here, here it is. At the end of Section 3, it says, if the rights authorized, this is for variance, if the rights authorized by variance are not experienced within a one year from the date of grant thereof, they shall lapse. A new petition notice and hearing will be required for the re-establishing. So they wanted to provide a similar statement under Part 2 for special permits, because right now it's just open and not defined specifically for South Row. And then, because special permits, 174-9 covers a whole bunch of special permits, a caveat kind of statement, like, all special permits, unless otherwise stated in another code, will lapse at X amount of years, not exceeding three.
So should just defer back to MGL on that?
And I did mention, well, it does say MGL, it does reflect back to that, but in MGL, it just says up to three years, as opposed to, they want to define it, so they don't have to keep writing it in the findings and everybody guessing what it is. All right, so beat that dead. So next is, let's see on the agenda.
Do they know that their regulations are in violation with the town code?
I don't know.
Just thought I'd throw that out there.
I'm not, I don't know if they know. But I can talk to Lara about that. She's, she's very diligent in her work, so. Just want to confirm that the downtown district bylaw amendment work for getting it up to speed is the only one the planning board is promulgating. The accessory apartments by right, will that, that's kind of Andrew.
You mean signs, adding downtown district to signs.
Signs, yeah.
Sign by law, yeah.
And there may be other areas in that bylaw, but also maybe in another, we want to check the rest of the code, if there's similar small, minor defects like that. Nothing major, just saying if it's calling out on the BV district, and that's what was meant, we should make sure we address the downtown district, those minor things. So accessory apartments by right will just be coming to the planning board for public hearing as part of a zoning amendment, if that's, if that language gets prepared, right?
I guess.
Okay, so right now the planning, because my purple asked, in order to make a decision on, you know, if we're going to have a special town meeting or not, what kind of articles were floating out there? And I mentioned those two.
Karina, I just wanted to mention, I gave the update at the last meeting, that, you know, we had that one meeting, Doris Cahill from the ZBA and myself met with Andrew Dennington, and I think Mr. Dennington was thinking about annual town meeting for that.
Okay.
But I think maybe that's what they'll talk about tomorrow. And I think this board gave some feedback that also would be very tight to have the hearings. So.
Plus Andrew's the chair, so he'll know.
He'll know.
What he's doing. He can explain it, okay.
Yeah, by the way, are they going to make a decision tomorrow night?
I don't know, they're going to discuss it.
Special town meeting, okay.
And tomorrow night is also the National Grid continued public hearing for the hazardous tree removal information. The zoning map is almost there. I just have to give it one more review to make sure all the zoning boundaries are aligned with what has previously been approved.
So for tomorrow night, is everybody going to be present for the, okay, thank you.
Okay, and we have a meeting posted, and everything's there, and there's information in the Dropbox application. And that's about it. Minutes?
Yep. So first motion is to approve the planning board minutes from our meeting on May 8th, 2023.
Second with discussion?
Ms. Houlihan.
My only comment was on line eight, there should be a comma after Stein, so it's a scripter's error.
After what?
Stein.
Stein.
On line eight? Oh, yeah.
Does anyone else? I have, of course, a couple. Line 111, the interim DPW superintendent is Abdul. It's not Bill's incoming, unless he was, unless she's referring to him, but I don't think so.
I'll fix it whichever way, it should be Abdul.
Okay. And then line 148, Freddie should be spelled with an IE on the end instead of a Y.
And usually we say Frederica.
We do.
Because that's her name.
That's her professional name.
Professional name, and it's, you have to check if it's a C or a K at the end. It's a C.
So we have a motion and a second, anything else on that? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Broschew, abstain.
Next motion is to approve the planning board minutes from our meeting on May 22nd, 2023.
Second.
I have one thing on this. Line 46, it says MGL, but it's not MGL, it's South Row code. Does anyone else have anything?
I had one, Mimi. On line 32, the, it should be the project at 250 Turnpike Road, that's what the 1990 special permit was attached to. That's it, thank you.
Sorry, could you repeat that, Lisa?
So on line 32, I had asked the question regarding the 1990 special permit and its impact on the proposed project at 120, it should be 250.
Which, which minutes are we talking about? Because I'm on May 22nd.
Oh.
I don't see.
I'm on June 6th. Sorry, no wonder, that didn't make any sense. Sorry. Then I have none.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Broschew, yes.
And next motion is to approve the planning board minutes from our meeting on June 6th, 2023.
Second with discussion? Yes. I was not absent, I dialed in on Zoom. I just wasn't physically present.
And Ms. Broschew, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you so very much. Yes, line 32, 250 Turnpike Road, thank you.
And on line 45, it has highlighted fitment, what is that?
I didn't know. I was hoping somebody else did.
Oh. I don't know what that is.
Mr. Ferris.
It says what, fitment?
Fitment.
I didn't go back and listen to the meeting.
I mean, the prior sentence talked about height requirements, so fitment, I kind of get it, not that it's a, I think it's a real, exactly, I don't know that it's a real word, but it may be what he said.
Okay.
So maybe we can figure out what that word means.
I have the definition.
Oh, it's a thing.
It is a word.
It's a noun, a fixed item, a furniture, a piece of equipment, especially in a house.
Is that what you just said? You knew that? No?
Oh, okay. That's what it is.
I called it George Bushism.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that, okay.
So we have a vote.
So that works, and I learned a new word. Awesome. That bridged it.
So it's.
In her vocabulary, kudos to her.
Line 45 is correct.
Yeah, yeah. So did we vote on that? We have a motion and a second, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Broschew, yes.
Do we have any further discussion that we can have, so we can't end before nine o'clock?
So. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Broschew, yes.